My name is Joanne Benton, Superintendent Schools, and I'm calling the school committee meeting of April 27th, 2011 to order because this is the first meeting after the recent election. I'd like to welcome our newest member, Jeanine Bonish. Congratulations. And I'd like to also congratulate Leslie Quick on her reelection.
Thank you.
It is the policy of the school committee that at the first meeting after the district's annual elections, there will be an election here for its members, membership of chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary. A majority of the members of the school committee will constitute a quorum, and we have a quorum this evening. The only one missing is Mr. Vale. This meeting shall be called to order, and I will preside until we elect a chair, and then I will turn it over to the new chair. The election proceeds as follows. Nominations for the offices of person will be made from the floor. The chairperson will be elected. A majority roll call vote of the members present in voting. If no nominee receives the majority vote, the election will be declared null and void. Nominations will be reopened. Upon election, the new chairperson will preside over the rest of the meeting. So I would like to ask the group at large if you have any nominees for chair of the school committee. Mr. Mckasey?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Leslie Quick for chair.
Any other nominations? Dr. Quick?
I nominate Mrs. Peggy Kane for chair.
Are they?
I nominate Robert Hayes for secretary.
Just going to do our chairperson first.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
Any more for chairperson?
I was excited there for a second.
Okay, so we have, any more nominations? Nominations closed, so we have two candidates, Dr. Leslie Quick, Mrs. Margaret Kane. So I believe I go by alphabetical order, and all those in favor of Mrs. Margaret Kane, please raise your hand. Bonish, Quick, Kane, Carroll, Hayes. Is that Mr. Vale coming in by any chance?
No.
All right. All those in favor of Dr. Quick, please raise your hand. Okay, on a five, two, one, and one being absent vote, I'd like to congratulate Mrs. Kane, chairperson.
Thank you.
I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. Our next election would be for vice chairman, and we'll do the same thing. Do we have any nominations from the floor for vice chairman? Mr. Hayes?
I'll nominate Dr. Quick for vice chair.
Do we have any other nominations for vice chairman? Okay. All those in favor of Dr. Quick for vice chairman. Unanimous, Linda, it's everybody.
That's the only thing I've done lately, I'm a brute.
That's good, congratulations. You're on a roll. I love that. And our last one is for secretary. Would we have any nominations for secretary? Mrs. Carroll?
I nominate Robert Hayes for secretary.
Thank you. Any other nominations for secretary? All those in favor of Robert Hayes for secretary. Unanimous, Linda. Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right. Thank you, congratulations, everybody. That's good. All right. Our first item of business will be the approval of items by consensus. Mrs. Benton?
There are three items of consensus evening, approval of minutes, and transmitting of treasury warrants. First, the approval of the minutes of the April 13th regular session, and I'm going to do them separate because some of you are not, I think, of emotion.
Right. We'll take a motion for the approval of the minutes of April 13th, 2011, regular session. Mr. Mckasey?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular school committee meeting dated April 13th, 2011.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes?
Second.
All those in favor?
She wasn't here.
And abstain. I forgot about Mrs. Bonish. Two abstain. One, two, three. Four in favor, Linda.
Approval of the minutes of April 13th, 2011 executive session not to be released.
And entertain a motion. Mr. Mckasey?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee executive session on April 13th, 2011, not for release.
Okay. All those in favor?
Second.
Oh, second, thank you, Mr. Hayes, second. All those in favor? Okay, that would be three in favor and three abstain. Thank you, Linda.
Approval of transmitting the treasury warrants, 413 payroll, L-64, L-65, L-66, L-67, G-420, G-421, G-422, I-229, I-230, I-231, and FS-17.
Okay, entertain a motion for the transmitting of treasury warrant. Thank you, Mr. Mckasey.
I move to approve the transmitting of the treasury warrants as read by the superintendent.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Hayes? All those in favor? Okay, one, two, three, four in favor, and abstain. One, two abstain. Oh, that's a good idea, because you always have to abstain.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
That's my next time.
Yeah, that's great. All right, we finished that. Oh, Students School Committee Representative Report. Good evening, Katie and John. Welcome.
There are only a few weeks left for seniors, and end-of-the-year events are beginning. The Pops Jasmine Concert is in the middle school auditorium tomorrow, the 28th, from 7:00 to 8:00. Strings Attached orchestra returned this week from a successful trip to Austria over April vacation, and they have their spring concert the coming Wednesday, May 4th, in the high school gymnasium, also 7:00 to 8:00. Many students at the high school are preparing for advanced placement tests, which will be taking place over the next two weeks at the high school. Senior prom is May 14th, and just a reminder, the makeup pre-prom assembly is Tuesday, May 4th, 6:00 p.m. at Wilmington High School, and both a student and parent must attend. Students can sign up with Ms. Deacon in the main office. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments, the students? Thank you so much. Good night. All right, our next item of business is the superintendent's report. Mrs. Benton?
Mrs. Kane, I'd like to invite up Allison Collins and Dawn DeChico, the coordinators of Destination Imagination, who have been responsible for an incredibly successful year, and it's not over yet, and they're going to talk about it this evening. My understanding is they were in the program many years ago, so I'm going to turn it over to them to tell a little bit about what's gone on this year, because they've done an incredible job of increasing participation.
Yeah, we had a huge increase in participation this year. Last year, we had four teams, and we ended this year with 11 teams, which, so we almost tripled the number of teams that we had, which is great. And then we had last year about 22 or so kids participating, and this year, we had about 53. So we've, you know, a little more than doubled how many kids were in the program. And we also have a team going to global finals for the first time, which is, in DI, there's three levels of competition. There's regional competition, state, and global finals. And we've never had a team go before, and we're very excited, and they're going for their community service project, um, called Kits for a Cause.
And I believe Miss Ryan is the advisor to that group?
Yes, she's the team manager.
All right, Ryan, who's in the audience. We are very excited. Can you tell us who the participants are that will be going to Tennessee?
It is Shavon Collins, Caitlin Norris, Jackie Ryan, which is Lori's daughter.
Quincy's daughter.
Quincy's daughter. Two other people.
And they're going to be traveling to Tennessee. What weekend?
The tournament is from May 25th through the 28th.
Yeah, will they present the project that they did here, or will they be given a new problem to solve?
They'll present their solution to their long-term challenge, which was called Dynamic Networks this year, and so they had to work on a, they had to identify what community meant to them and create a community service project that helped out with that and use social, uh, use a social network to achieve that goal. So they did Kits for a Cause and created emergency kits for the elderly in Wilmington. So they'll go there, and they'll present their presentation in regards to that, which they've prepared a skit for. And then they do have something that they don't know about, which is an instant challenge, so they'll go, and they'll, you know, there'll be a quiet room where they bring all the teams, and probably given a challenge that they have no knowledge of before, and they'll, it's typically about five to eight minutes that they'll have to solve that challenge and present their solution, and that could range from making up a jingle about how to use peanut butter in a different way, to having straws and cups and having to build a bridge that can hold a certain amount of weight.
Well, we wish you all the best. I'm just curious, are you interested in continuing on next year?
Yeah.
I don't want to push you on this slide. You've done a fabulous job.
Thank you. Thank you so much for all of your help and support this year, too. It's nice to, it's really nice to have people, to have, like, the school be so supportive of the program, because a lot of other towns don't have that, and we really appreciate it.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Just a, just a few quick things. I'm also very happy to see the district getting more behind Destination Imagination. I know that in this year's FY11 budget, we funded $5,000, and next year, we're funding an additional $5,000. And I also know that relative to the, to the trips, we've given $4,000 to offset some of the costs, so I think that's wonderful. And can you talk a little bit about some of the fundraising activities that Destination Imagination will be undertaking next month? Are you familiar with any of those? I heard about a car wash and a restaurant fundraiser. Do you want to maybe mention those dates?
Next week, we are having a fundraiser. It's running from 5:00 to 8:00, and if anyone's interested, we have flyers that you have to present in order to get the credit for Wilmington Destination Imagination. Lori's team is running a car wash. I'm not sure if they have the exact date. I believe it is the weekend before they leave. We are also running a sponsor per mile, so you can sponsor however many miles you want to do. It's about 900 miles to go from here to Tennessee, so people are sponsoring however many miles they would like.
We might throw another, like, food fundraiser with, like, Royal Dynasty or somebody like that, which we're trying to work out a date for. We might, you know, we're trying to work on a couple of other things with that, so we have definitely locked down so far.
And I believe information on those fundraisers are on the district's website.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Quick? I just want to thank you girls for all the work you guys did this year. It's a tremendous opportunity. I highly recommend for parents to get all the children involved. It is a lot of work. It's, it's challenging, but it's extremely rewarding at the same time. And one of the things I just wanted to mention, too, I think part of the reason why that it's starting to, the word's starting to get out, you know, when I first heard about it from Lori herself, I'd never heard of it before. So I think getting the school involved and continuing that, you know, collaboration is really going to help, you know, get more numbers in, so I think, and more people getting to globals, so.
Absolutely.
It's exciting for the future, exactly. So, good job, guys.
Thank you.
Excellent work. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Lauren.
Oh, Lori. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I just want to thank Dawn and Allison as well for their involvement in Destination Imagination. It's been, DI has been in Wilmington for 15 years, and, oh, the past years, we've just seen it blossom under your coordination, so that's wonderful. I've been with the program for eight years with my daughter. We're going to globals, as mentioned, and I just want to thank as well the town of Wilmington and the school administration and its committee for really supporting the team and getting behind us, because it's really exciting, but there is a financial piece to it as well. So we're really excited, and one thing I did bring is one of the kits that the, my team, and Maureen's team as well, developed for Kits for a Cause, and these are being distributed to some of the high-risk senior citizens in Wilmington through the senior center. We're working with them. So they've been working hard raising money to buy all the items that go into the kits, and with that, you know, they really established a good cause. So it's because of this program, and we really want to see it continue. So thank you very much.
Lauren, can you just show a little bit about what's in the kit?
Sure. So the girls came up, as mentioned, they had to determine a community need, which they did. They spoke to the town manager, they spoke to police and fire, they spoke to the director of senior services. They came up with wanting to focus on the elderly, and with the safety kits primarily too, because we had such a hard winter, and because of a lot of the natural disasters, I think that was in the forefront of their thought. So they researched, came up with what should be in a kit, and some of the items are obvious, you know, a flashlight, you know, but they came up with their own plan on things as well. They, you know, first aid kit. They had to put duct tape in their, their kit, because with DI, everything is with duct tape. So they had to do that. You know, wipes. They have can opener, because they're also, you know, recommending that people put in non-perishable items in here. You know, they have water, a whole list of items that you would be looking for if your lights were out or whatnot, and, and the reason the high-risk seniors are so important is they don't have the resources. They don't have maybe the family or friends that can help them out during an emergency situation. So it's, it's a great cause, and we're really, like I said, very thankful for the support we've had along the way.
Can I ask you, would they, I, I know that they're given little tasks to do, and some of them are, they've never seen before, but was it, were they all supposed to do something related to community service, or did our children just decide that was a good area?
Yeah, that's right. They could select from, I think it was six different challenges. One of them was a community outreach challenge, and this is actually a new challenge that started last year. So they chose that because I think they're getting, you know, they're getting older, they're eighth graders. I think they're seeing, you know, obviously the value in community service, so that's the one they picked. And from there, they went to, you know, define what that community need is, and how are we going to address that community need.
The other challenge is that every year, they, each challenge has the same educational focus, though, like, the different pieces that you have to do are different. So there's always a technical challenge where they have to design a structure. So this year, they had, like, a six-foot-tall structure, and they had to design something that would move things from the top to the bottom and put them in certain locations. There's a science challenge every year, which one of our teams did this year, so they had to make their presentation about an energy cycle and incorporate information. There's a challenge, there's always a challenge on fine arts that emphasizes theater and performing arts. There's always one on improv, which Quincy's team did. And there's a structure challenge where, we actually had two teams do it this year, which was exciting, because I don't think we've ever had a team do it before, but they're given probably about, like, two ounces of balsa wood and a couple other things. This year was glue and tin foil, and they have to build a structure that will hold as much weight as possible.
Wow, that is fantastic. Mr. Vale, I didn't know if you'd want to say a few words.
Other than apologizing for being late?
Yeah.
Stuck in traffic. Um, there's not much to add. I missed the early part. I just think DI is a great program. I think it's important for life skills of collaborative problem solving, and, and listening, and learning how to communicate with others, which I think is what we all do on a daily basis, and I don't really particularly care what your profession is. The reason it's such a good program for, for students in conjunction with the school district is I just think that the, the school itself, except maybe in science labs and other kinds of things, there isn't a lot of opportunity to do things on a collaborative or team basis, and typically, I think labs are probably two, maybe three people, and it may only just be a period or two. It's not an ongoing challenge, it's really, and it's really not student-driven either. They tend to be very regimented, and you get a, a list of ingredients and how they have to mix together, and the step-by-step you have to follow, so there's not a lot of creativity involved in, in trying to do that. So I'm very pleased with the progress that Destination Imagination has made throughout the, throughout the town in conjunction with the school district. I hope that the school committee and the administration sees fit to continue to fund it next year and to continue to grow the program, and I'd like to encourage more and more kids to get involved with it and it to be more, even more fully integrated into the, into the school system as well. I know a number of other public school districts do take a very active role with respect to the Destination Imagination programs, and there may be models out there that we, that we could review and look into incorporating into the way it's implemented here in Wilmington.
Excellent, thank you.
I just want to add one thing. I think it's interesting that, you know, you've heard me talk all year about 21st century skills and what it is that we want to add to the three I's as we move into a renovated and new high school, and it's all the skills that Destination Imagine teaches, which is critical thinking skills, communication, collaboration, and teamwork. And I think it's, it's, you know, I congratulate you on really pursuing your passion and sharing it with all of us, and we look forward to more support along the way.
And thank you for all the hard work and for your teams, everything that you've done, Lori, too. Maureen, thank you so much.
Oh, I see her.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. We can't wait to hear what happens. No matter what happens, just getting there is what's really so exciting, so important. Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
Good night. Thank you. My next item under the superintendent's report is Global Child. I just want to, going to committee that I am about to sign an agreement with Global Child to continue with Spanish classes next year, and I would like to ask Global Child to pursue the Mandarin, which they have offered, to see if we have students in the community who'd like to take Mandarin. I think it's, I'm thrilled. I've been hoping that they would branch out, and they have, and I'd love to take the, this is a program that is funded by the parents, that actually, and we end up, it's receiving some income from Global Child for rental of the classrooms, and it gives children in the community an opportunity to participate in foreign language programs at an early age, which is ideally, if I had a blank check for schools, I would be starting foreign language in kindergarten, because I, I think that's the young you are when you start a second language, the more you, you become an expert at that language. So I wanted to let you know that unless there's any opposition, I will.
Okay, Mr. Vale?
I would just say, gracias, Benton, lausche.
Merci beaucoup.
Mandarin.
You did Mandarin, I couldn't do that.
Wow, very impressive. Thank you.
Probably a terrible accent, which I'll apologize for.
That's all right. Good to me. And lastly, I wanted to report that the Wilmington Educational Foundation awarded three, what were formerly called Fund for Teachers, but actually, Jack Raffey's in the audience, and our president, Emeritas, who came up with a new title, Teacher Exploration Grants, and we had many more applications this year than we could fulfill, but pleased to say that North Intermediate Teacher Sally Logeck will be traveling to Williamsburg to study colonial times. It's a three-week program, intensive program that will tie with the social studies, fifth grade social studies curriculum. Neil Roberts, middle school art teacher, will be traveling to Washington, D.C. to put together a tour of the D.C. Art Museums for the eighth-grade students that go on the trip. So now we're bringing art, a stronger formalized art program into the eighth-grade Washington trip. And lastly, middle school foreign language teacher Lauren Fasiano, Fasio, excuse me, will be traveling to Italy and Spanish to study the culture and refine her Italian and Spanish. If we get a population of sixth graders to sign up for Italian, Lauren will be the teacher. So we thank the Wilmington Educational Foundation for the good work that they do for the schools. As you all know, these are grants that do not supplant the school budget, but supplement it by providing innovative ways for teachers to do professional development or receive technology grants. So, thank you, Jackie, on behalf of the Wilmington Educational Foundation.
Any questions or comments? I'd just like to say also, Jackie, as a former teacher, this would have been so exciting. I don't know if other communities do this. I don't know of any other communities that, that do this, where they actually have travel grants for the teachers. And the idea that the eighth-grade field trip will add, the museum section will add to that, I think that is fantastic. It's, it's really a wonderful thing. So thank you. Thank you from all of us. Our next item of business is old business, update on the high school feasibility study. Mrs. Benton?
Well, the, the small group of us has been very busy continuing the work of the high school feasibility study. We have been working on the proposed space summary, which, excuse me, as you know, has to comply with the MSBA regulations, and that's almost finalized. We actually have a meeting tomorrow, the working group. Our next high school building committee, meeting is May 5th, and we will, should, we'll be seeing the recommendations from Doran Whittier on the site, and what, narrowing down further from the last public hearing. We have another vision meeting planned with Frank Locker, who will be with us all day on May 5th, and any school committee member who would like to join us, we're going to be at the middle school from 8:00 to 2:30, doing the second piece of the vision. If you did not attend the first session, not to worry, because some of us that were at the first session, like Mr. Ruggiero and Mr. Hayes, will be teaching the novices what they learned, and then we will be doing some project-based learning activities to get everybody involved. So just let me know by the end of the week if you'd like to attend. And the next public hearing for the high-
Just a quick question. The, the meeting on May 5th, when is it going to be held? The high school building committee?
Here, 6:30.
Oh, here, here in the library?
Yes, yes. They're always here in the library unless there's a conflict.
Okay, yeah, just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
And the next public hearing will take place on May 12th in the Wilmington High School Auditorium, also at 6:30.
All right, great, thank you. Now we're on to new business. We're going to have a food service report, and I have to tell you, I bumped into Mrs. Palin going down the corridor, and I said, when I saw you on the agenda, I went, oh, good, we're having food tonight, but I was saying it as a joke. And look what she's done. We are having food tonight, so.
I'd like to invite Mary up, and if you could just move to the chair and sit. As you all know, Mary Palin has been the food service director for six years? Mary? Six?
Five.
Five years, five years.
Thank you.
And has done a phenomenal job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
So, thank you, everyone, for inviting me here. Food service is always exciting. There's always things happening. It's always changing, day to day, all the time. One of the things that I like to focus on is the promotions, and trying to get the students excited about what we're doing. For instance, it's almost become an annual event now, the corn shucking day with the fourth graders. It's really fun. The students have a ball. I never knew that Mr. Shaw actually worked on his uncle's farm, shucking corn, and he's the expert. How embarrassed was I as I'm trying to explain to all the students how to do it, and he can do one in, you know, 10 seconds, while I'm still struggling with the kids. It's really, it's a great day. It's a lot of fun, and the fourth grade students that day, I do usually the north in the morning, and in the afternoon, we do the west, and they shuck all the corn for the entire district. So the next day, we have corn at, fresh corn at every school, the high school, the middle school, and they get a big kick out of that, too, because they get to go home and tell their older siblings or younger siblings, yeah, the corn, make sure you get the corn tomorrow, because I shucked it. So they enjoy that as well. That's just one of the, one that is exciting with the kids. This year, this is something that I've done in previous years in other districts, and this year, I said, you know, I'm going to see if everyone wants to do it with me. And so I put it out, and everyone jumped on board, and we call it Gobble Gobble Day, and it's done the week before Thanksgiving, when we have our traditional pre-Thanksgiving feast. This year, all the administrators pitched in and helped serve all the lunches. I had students, as you can see, that's Mr. Tracy, working with someone and one of the, and a student. Literally, the students were coming in just to get lunch. They don't even necessarily like turkey, but because Mr. Tracy was serving the turkey, they were getting turkey lunch that day. More promotions. The typical ones that we do all the time, every year, the Super Bowl. This year, I raffled off, let me think, what did I raffle off? Pizzeria Uno gift cards, T-shirts, what else? Oh, iTunes gift cards. The students, when they come up to do raffle, it's a free raffle for all students, it doesn't matter. matter. I did it at the high school this year, and they come up, and they're, this is free, they don't, they can't comprehend that it's just a free raffle, and it's just for fun and for them to do. This year, we featured Pizzeria Uno pizza that day. I had it come in from one of my vendors, and we featured that, and they gave me some of the gift cards to give to the students. We always do, every year, in the month of March, International Week at the high school and the middle school, and every day it's a different theme, and we decorate for it, and it coincides, and the foreign language department in both schools are very happy and excited about it because they tie in their whole International Week. I usually email them and check and make sure that I have the right week. Opening day, always a big hit, we decorate the schools. We decorate the schools constantly, you know, whether it's spring, winter, fall, but then, you know, when it's opening day, you will see, you know, giant baseballs, a giant bat, you know, blow-up ones in the cafeteria, in the server area, and giant, you know, Red Sox banners and things like that. You know, we did it, this year, opening day in Boston was actually on Friday, so we did it on Thursday and said, "Opening day tomorrow," seeing as it was Lent, we, that's how we go. I had the requests from many. This year, we were also the recipient of a grant through Whole Foods whereby you needed to apply to get $5,000 worth of salad bar equipment. They would give you a salad bar and the equipment, which we were the recipients of. So we decided that we were going to do it at the Woburn Street School, and it's been doing very well. I mean, there's days when maybe only 20 students, that's usually Chicken Nugget Day, and then other days we may have 80 students participate in the salad bar. It's just another choice. We didn't take away anything, as far as like, we didn't, you know, we're not serving peanut butter sandwiches or ham and cheese and this is instead of that. Nope, it's just one more option. We always have side salads for students to have with their lunch, but this is, the students have learned, you know, there's always like protein, for instance, like tuna fish on there, so sometimes the students will come through and they'll grab the whole wheat sarien bread and put tuna fish on their tray on the side, and they make their little sandwich, and they have their salad. It's just a good way to get some low-fat protein in them, some whole grains, and just another choice of salads, getting them to eat more fresh fruits and vegetables, which we put on the salad bar. Training, we're always trying to do training. We do safety training. This last spring, and we'll be doing it again on the 11th, we do a training with slips, falls, slips, falls, and it escapes me. But it's all around the fact of, you know, working in the kitchen, it's hustle and bustle, it's quick pace, and spills happen, and you can't be reminded too often to slow down, what was it, trips? Thank you. And trips. You can't, you know, it's a day-to-day thing, and you start to take it for granted, so we try and do it once a year, to remind everyone to slow down, take their time, if you see, you know, something looks dangerous, whether it's a cord, or it's, you know, wet floor, stop, take care of it, don't just pass it by. Even for, even like the winter months, you know, when like my staff may be walking, you know, through a corridor, and there's a wet spill from like a student with slushy boots, you know what I mean? Just don't pass it by, find a custodian, let him know, you know what I mean? It's total ownership, not just about the cafeteria. Algae training was a requirement this year with the Mass Department of Health, as far as one person per building needs to be trained on algae awareness, and it was, you know, probably a two-hour seminar, just making sure that we know how to read labels, we look at labels, we know different things, you know, we look for characteristics and things that you may not necessarily, you know, think that something is peanuts, but then if you look at something else, it may trigger, you know, that you realize that really they shouldn't have that product. You know, how to read the labels accurately, that if it's made in a peanut facility, or if it's, things like that. Serve Safe Training, we train the staff every year, whoever needs to be trained. I myself needed to be retrained this year, so I'm now good for five years, I just got mine back. Which, in case you're unfamiliar with Serve Safe, it covers everything. It's a very intensive, all-day seminar, and then you take a test afterwards, which can last up to two hours. And the staff gets a book about this thick beforehand, with all the temperatures of what you should have foods, how long you should store foods, how you should rotate your inventory, how you should cool foods properly, how to heat foods properly, all those things are covered in it. And of course, before we came back to school, along with the rest of the staff, we had the anti-bullying training, which also takes ownership for other staff as well, because sometimes those things might occur with them witnessing it, and they need to bring it to the forefront. What's new? Okay, so, you know I like to try new things all the time. Sometimes I find things on the web, some things I steal from friends, some things I find at restaurants and then try to duplicate, sometimes I find things in magazines. So sometimes just students come into my office, and we'll just be chatting, and I'll say, you know, I just need, what do you think? And one student said, "How about just, we do wraps made to order at the high school," and they suggested, "Why not just do chicken Caesar wraps?" Like, just that one, because that's the most popular. And I said, "Okay." So we've been doing it, and it's been going great. Grilled chicken sandwich, of course, everyone is very familiar with the move to try and get away from breaded items, lower-fat items, lower-sodium items. We keep trying, but I can't lie, they prefer the breaded chicken patty. It is what it is. I, we keep trying, that's all we can do. We're going to try barbecue grilled chicken sandwich next, and hope that maybe we can pull in a few more students, and maybe if we keep trying, we'll get in some more students. Whole wheat bagels. Shoshine School loves the whole wheat bagels. They don't, we've seen no difference if we serve white bagels or whole wheat bagels. Middle school, complete drop-off on bagel sales when we went to the whole wheat bagels. Whole wheat pita seems to have not been an issue at all. We're still doing just as much pita before, whether it was white or whole wheat. Some other things, with the USDA, they're going to be a big push, they're revamping the entire, the meal program and what we have to do with the National School Lunch Program, and they're pushing that we will serve beans once a week to students. So we're trying, we're trying to get ahead of it, and so we're doing things like three-bean salad. We're including kidney beans now in the taco meat, which we didn't do before. Some kids are fine with it, and other students, you know, like, there's beans now, but, you know, and they work around it, and, but we're making progress. Roasted fresh broccoli, I'll actually be doing that next week, demonstrating if anybody happens to be at the health fair at town hall. That's a new item that we're doing this year, just another way to get them to eat some fresh broccoli. We do it with a little bit of oil and garlic and Parmesan cheese. Grab-and-go apple slices and grab-and-go baby carrots with low-fat dip. We're actually selling these at the high school. My staff cuts them, the baby carrots come in already done. I'm going to pass them around so you can try them. They cost 75 cents. We sell them à la carte, and right beside the pretzels, and the low-fat cookies, and low-fat ice cream, and baked chips. The carrot sticks are the bigger favorite over the apple slices, but, and in case you're wondering what the liquid is in the bottom, it's lemon juice, that's what keeps the apples from browning. We mix, we cut up the apples and then mix it in with lemon juice. The financial status of the food service program, we're very fortunate that, based on economies of scale in Wilmington, we have one of the highest participation rates, in case you're ever wondering, for students that purchase lunch compared to the amount of students that are low-income. Most districts that have our participation have a significant correlation of their low-income student amount participation, I mean, percentage-wise to the participation. Ours is not that case. I think that just the parents in Wilmington like, the students like the lunches, they buy the lunches, the parents realize it's an affordable lunch for $2 or $1.75. You know, they can get a sandwich, a soup, a side salad, and fruit, usually if they want two fruits, too, or milk. That's a lot for $1.75. Most parents can't do that at home. Our operating expenses for a month, that's what they pretty much look like. They've gone up a little bit over the past few years. I'm sure everyone's well aware of the cost of food going up in the grocery store due to the fuel issue that we're experiencing. And at the end of February, that is what the revolving fund balance was for the lunch program. Capital purchases this past year, as you can see, the high school needed a couple of things. Reach-in freezer, we needed a tilt skillet, we needed a new milk cooler at Wildwood, a tray slide at North Intermediate. One of the, one of the requirements recently has been that you need CO2 detectors in any restaurant or food service establishment. We fall into that category, so whenever we're now putting in new equipment, for instance, I put in the tilt skillet at the high school, I'm required to put in CO2 detectors. And the same happened at Woburn Street when I put in the double-stack ovens. And last summer, we lost two freezer compressors. These are the proposed purchases for next year. And you know, the funny thing is, sometimes you look at this list, and it's been the same from year to year, because we just know some we need to do and we want to do, and some get put on a back shelf because, you know, the compressors come up and things like that. The high school will need the double-stack ovens, we have, we need to update the computers at all the registers, all the POS registers, as well as the monitors. We rarely could use a grill at the high school, and we have long since taken out a kettle at the north that I haven't replaced. They're making, they're making do. And then, of course, there's always the miscellaneous items that come up that I can't foresee.
Mary, my understanding is, this equipment at the high school, if there was a decision to do something with the high school, could be moved to another school?
Yeah, I already discussed that, as well as some of the equipment I've recently purchased, that that will go with us. So basically, I have a fun job, because I do fun things all day. I do, I have fun with the kids doing promotions. We rarely do offer a huge variety of fresh fruits and vegetables and whole grain foods. We supply the staff with appropriate training and the acquired training they have to have, and financially, we do great.
And I just want to repeat that, acknowledge the work that Mary Palin has done, because when she came to Wilmington, we were not doing as great as we are doing now, and we have not only a self-sustaining food service program, but one that is continuing to flourish, students continue to take advantage of, and Mary continues to really be almost, you know, on the forefront of some wonderful, you know, ideas that are getting students to eat healthier. In addition, Mary serves on the wellness committee with Leslie and me, and we have worked on different projects this year. You might have read about the recess before lunch over at West, which is something that I had brought to the group to try out, and Dennis Shaw took us up on the offer, and Mary was reporting at the last meeting that we've seen an increase in the amount of lunch that the students are eating and a decrease in the amount of waste. Because what we found out, it's pretty easy to figure out, that children want to be out at recess, and if they have to eat their lunch to get out to recess, then we see a lot more waste than if they are doing the reverse. And actually, teachers are reporting that the students come into the classroom refreshed and calm and ready to go. So we are, Mary and I have challenged the other elementary principals to come up with schedules to do it in all the schools next year, and with a little addition of time, I think that will work. In addition, Mary participates on town boards, and, as she mentioned, on May 4th is the town Employee Health Fair, and Mary will be representing food service and giving out some yummy treats, and also talking about good nutrition. Any of the purchases that Mary makes, the capital funds come out of the revolving account? That means the funds that she makes, she puts right back into the program. Thank you, Mary, for announcing your job.
I don't know if anyone else has any children or grandchildren at the Woburn Street School, but I would like to report that my grandson has gone wild about that salad bar. Never known to eat salad at home. Has it every day, is so excited about the salad bar. So the variety of things that you offer, they eventually seem to hit every child. So I just want to congratulate you on that. Mr. Hayes?
Mrs. Palin, I just have three quick questions, one serious, one kind of serious, and one not serious. You had touched on it briefly in the presentation, but will next year's lunch price be going up, or will it stay the same as this year's?
I'm reviewing it now, based on the fact that the National School Lunch Program with the USDA and the Massachusetts Department of Education is pushing for schools, it's legislature that's coming down, it has nothing to do with me, but it's coming down the pike that they want to make sure that lunches eventually, like within five years, whatever a lunch cost is, is the same as a free reimbursable that the state and federal government reimburse a town for. They want that to be the same price.
That's great.
So if it does happen, it would be something you would have to, it might be like a nickel. That's what you'd have to look at, and it's because I'd be required to.
Understood.
Our lunches are less than.
Right, because our lunches are only $1.75. It really comes from, just so, in case you're wondering, there's, our lunches are $1.75. The cities where the participation of free and reduced students is so high, that their lunches are, their paid lunches are $1.75. But what they're finding is because the whole participation of the free and reduced students, they're actually offsetting the cost for the paid students. In our case, it's economies of scale, and unfortunately, we're going to be penalized for it.
A friend of my sister, who recently graduated WHS last year, she wanted me to ask you, why, why at the high school do we not serve chicken nuggets every day?
And you know, I have to say, it is kind of funny, because I actually came into the library tonight, and they have the menu posted over there for the month, and it's all highlighted tomorrow, because tomorrow's Chicken Nugget Day. It's variety, if, one of the things is with the Department of Education, when they come in and do reviews, one of the reviews is called an SMI, and they look at your sodium level, they look at your, they look at your, how much vitamin A, how much vitamin C, what your fat content is, if it's saturated fat, trans fat, no, trans fat, sorry, saturated fats, and total fat. And what, the thing is, is once you start introducing more processed foods, that becomes an issue.
Sure, sure. And then my final question was, you had referenced the gobble-gobble day that the administration took part in, and I was wondering if you would sort of grade the performances of Superintendent Bennett and Mr. Rogiro?
They both did just fine.
That's not what I heard.
Someone got fired that day. Wow.
Not Mr. Rogiro.
Shut the line.
He sure did.
But thank you very much. Thank you, and as far as I'm concerned, you're welcome anytime. Thank you for the snacks.
This is Mackenzie.
About a month ago or so, in the papers, there was a big issue about Boston schools and them getting food out of Wilmington food pantry, or whatever, the main distribution, whatsoever. Have they changed their policies and procedures to make sure that if we get any of their food, all that's fixed, or so we don't end up getting expired food that they're holding and comes this way, or whatever happens?
Right. Boston is a unique situation because of the fact that they used that warehouse as a storage facility for themselves, not just that that's where everyone's is kept, and then they give us an office sheet, and we say, "Okay, we'd like five of this this month, we two of this this month, whatever." They are so paid to have their stuff stored there. What unfortunately they didn't do was, what we do, is we only order a month or two months worth of food, depending on what the food item is, and that's it. They might have ordered six months' worth of food and then didn't use it, and didn't take their inventory like they should have. So it really, it's really kind of related to Boston more than-- So it really, it's really kinda related to Boston more than anybody else. They didn't manage their inventory.
Okay.
No, I don't have any to do with the facilities sending stuff out by the way.
No, no, we've never received anything like, that we shouldn't. I mean, if we, if a case comes in and it's like dented or broken or anything, we don't accept it. And my staff is excellent about managing their inventory.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mrs. Palin, we appreciate it. Always delightful. All right. Our next item of new business is the admission of transfer student policy, first reading.
We have, the policy subcommittee consisting of Mr. Hayes and Mr. Palin and myself bringing before you two policies this evening that are recommended to be included in our policy book. The first one has to do with our transfer of students from charter schools, and this is required by law, that the school district will enroll and place students who have left Commonwealth charter schools by adhering to the same policies and procedures in place for any other student enrolled in the school district, including but not limited to examination of the courses studied and level of academic attainment of the student when determining the student's appropriate grade placement or eligibility for high school graduation. I should've prefaced this by saying for our newest school committee member, school committee policies, we do at least two readings. The first reading is so that the subcommittee can receive questions, and then if everybody is comfortable, we will vote the second. If not, we will vote on the third.
Mr. Marquezey?
I'm sorry, I just have a question. On the paper I have, there are two policies. Which one, there are two that are written. One is by, looks like MASC, and the other one's by Department Elementary Secondary Education. I don't know which one we're endorsing or which one we're putting forward, or putting them both forward.
Both of them.
Okay.
It's recommended that both of them be part of our policy.
Okay, all right, thank you. I mean, 'cause they both say the same, so.
And then, the second policy is an animals in school policy that is required under new regulations passed by the Americans with Disability Act. School districts are now required to publish a policy requiring, regarding, excuse me, the presence and use of service animals in schools. The regulations can be found at 28 CFR Part 35. Require each school district to have the policy in place. And we're a little late, but all school districts are late because the MASC just got it out to us. So there is a policy here that discusses animals in schools. And I think Mr. Hayes and Mr. Veil and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Dr. Quick?
This may seem like a silly question, but just for logistical purposes, the page that says animals prohibited from school, wild animals and domestic stray animals, if, let's just say, there's, you know, in my biology class, I had some strange animals that I had to dissect. Would that be, is that included in something like this? What, how does that work?
It is included in this policy. There's guidelines for, and suggestions for which animals ought to be used in bio labs. Actually, we now are doing ninety percent technology-driven dissections instead of using...
I was in Mr. Farby's anatomy and physiology class my senior year, and I had to dissect a pig, and there's not a day that goes by that I don't think about that pig. That was just disgusting. But, but just to, just to, you know, follow through with what Superintendent Benton was saying, these two policies, one of them is required by the state, the other is required by the federal government, and the language that we used for the policies was basically verbatim what the Massachusetts Association of School Committees suggested. So I, and additionally, we currently don't have any students in the district using service animals, and we haven't had any students transferring from charter schools. So these are somewhat obscure policies, but they're things that, you know, by law, we're supposed to have in our policy handbook, so.
Excellent. Any questions or comments, any other?
So we'll bring them back.
It's good, we'll bring it back at the next meeting.
At the mail-in meeting.
For a vote. Meanwhile, if you have any issues in between then, or something pops up, you could contact Mr. Hayes, the superintendent, or Mr. Veil to go over them. Our next item is town meeting warrant articles.
The town meeting is taking place Saturday at high school at ten thirty, is that right? Ten thirty. And there are several, several articles that we just wanted to point out to the group this evening because they have to do with supporting the school capital articles. One, purchase of one replacement, Article Six, wheelchair accessible minivan. Article Seven involves the replacement of part of the roof at the Wildwood Early Childhood Center. Article Eight, asking for the installation and upgrade fire alarm system at the north and at the Woburn Street. As you know, we have done them at the Shoshine and at the Wildwood. Article Nine is to installation of high-energy efficient forced hot air furnace at the buttwell. And Article, no, that's all the school articles, I believe. Am I missing?
This one later on, but it's gonna be taken, it's probably gonna be taken off.
Article Eleven deals with the tennis courts at the Woburn Street School. Had you mentioned that one, and the buttwell, the tennis and basketball court fencing. And then Article Twelve, even though it's, it's not very sexy sounding, that actually was what allowed us to go ahead with the green repair program.
That's right.
We brought this up because, so the new people, so our new person, and those of us who've been on before, that we should plan to be at the school, at the town meeting through those articles, just in case. But the town is, works out so well with the school department in placing those major items on the, on the warrant, that it's really important that we let them know, that we totally thank them and support them.
And if another green repair grant comes about and the roof is approved at Wildwood, I would go after another grant.
Oh, excellent.
So that we could get our reimbursement for, for part of that house expenses. I'm hearing that the MSBA is gonna do another round of those grants this spring, so.
Wow. And they're on a roll giving us grants, so.
We'll take it.
We'll take it, absolutely. Any other questions or comments on that issue? All right. Thank you. Our next item of business is public comments. Do we have anyone who wants a public comment?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Kevin McDonald, Wilmington resident, Chair Lady Kane, Superintendent Benton, members of the board, good evening. First of all, I wanna congratulate our newest member, Mrs. Bonnies, congratulations on topping her ticket, and congratulations, Mrs. Quick. I come before the board tonight, we have a town meeting Saturday where we're gonna be voting on school budget over thirty-one million dollars, and I just had a few questions, and...
Mr. McDonald, I'm sorry, but I have to explain to you that public comments section on school meeting meetings are in regards to our agenda items.
We can get the response back to one of the questions.
And so if you have other questions, the superintendent's office tomorrow will be glad to get the responses back to you.
I'm aware of the, I'm aware of the agenda. There was just transportation for homeless people, it looked like, on, in the budget, and it looks like it's been going over budget for consecutive years to the degree of about forty thousand dollars.
This is not part of our discussion tonight, so we can't get into these details. This is something Mr. Ruggiero would be glad to let you know tomorrow, if you give him an opportunity to look into it. So if you...
Well, I thought it might be reasonable tonight since people are watching at home, and I didn't wanna catch it by surprise at the town meeting, and I thought maybe Mr. Ruggiero could be brought up to speed, and if it's brought up at the town meeting, why in the last couple fiscal years, we had over an eighty thousand dollar expenditure for budget items that were sixteen thousand five hundred dollars and sixteen thousand five hundred dollars, where we spent fifty-six thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And I just wanted, if you could just explain to us about the homeless children, if we have a lot, that are being transported to school?
You know what would be great? That would be a great meet, for town meeting, that would be fine. Let Mr. Ruggiero, it's very difficult for someone to come in here and put facts to Mr. Ruggiero where he doesn't have his booklets with him or his information, so...
From Mr. Ruggiero's budget book?
Right.
I could give this to him.
No, that's not how we operate. Sorry, that's not how we operate. They'll be glad to give you the answer.
Okay.
All right? So now he has the question, and he'll find out tomorrow, and he'll be glad. So do you have another question?
Yeah.
If you wanna give a couple of questions, they'll be glad to find them out for you tomorrow, but we are not discussing them at this meeting.
That's fine. One of the budget items were the feasibility study, and last year, the taxpayers were asked to vote to appropriate one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
But I have to say, that's a town item, Mr....
The contract was six hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars.
Mr. McDonald, that's not a school side.
Oh, it was on, it was on the agenda for school feasibility study, but the disturbing thing is, is that Mrs. Benton didn't tell us that there was an oil spill here. And I've also found out, and I'd like to question the board, I thought we, I just heard that we had an oil spill at the middle school, so if at town meeting, you can be brought up to speed, you don't have to give me the answer tonight, but at town meeting, I think it would be reasonable if people asked the board questions so that you're not being caught off guard.
Thank you.
You've got misinformation on the feasibility study, we'll get you the exact cost of the entire contract.
I actually have a contract right here.
You have one contract. There are two contracts.
From Doran Woodia, and I have Leser in Joplin, and I also have the budget book where Mr. Carr said that the town appropriated one million one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, the question is, excuse me for one second.
No, excuse me, Mr. McDonald, I'm gonna answer you on that one, no, because you're giving out false information. It's a one point one million dollars is appropriated. Two pieces of the puzzle have to do with the door, the, excuse me, Jassa and Lesa piece, part one of Doran Woodia, and then there is a second piece to Doran Woodia that we have not entered into contract negotiations with. That's the three pieces of the feasibility study. That will happen in the, in the next month, next three months, okay?
Okay. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you.
And we will have the...
Have a lovely evening.
And we'll have the McKenty Bento.
Okay, look forward to having questions answered at town meeting.
Yep. We'll be glad to have it.
That'll be fun, thank you. Thank you. Do we have any other public comments? Okay. Thank you. Other reports. The other reports come from our, here they are.
Just remind everyone that tomorrow night is race, we're doing this building of Race to Nowhere at Burlington High School from seven to nine. Tickets are still available, and we actually are going to have our twenty-five of our high school students will be participating, and a couple of our high school students will be leading the discussion along with two Burlington High School students. So we're very excited about this, and it's just down the street. They have a huge, beautiful auditorium, and Dr. Conti, superintendent of schools in Burlington, is looking forward to welcoming the Wilmington contingency, and we have sold quite a few tickets, so I'm thrilled.
Excellent.
And tickets still can be purchased online or at the door tomorrow evening.
Excellent. Thank you. Our other reports go along with our subcommittee assignments, and if you, I'd open this up to how you feel like doing this. People who are on negotiating subcommittees really need to stay on those committees, so we should not be changing those assignments at this point, no matter how much. Should not do that. But the other assignments, they really do take time, and they meet at different times, Mrs. Bonnies, so we'd be glad to tell you when they meet, any special ones. But do you feel like doing this tonight, or do we wanna think about it over the next couple of weeks and then re-sign up for your assignments for, at the next meeting, which I'm thinking is probably the best? But I'll do whatever, whatever people wish, what you think. Yes, so you could look over the assignments and see.
And I'll be glad to sit with you to describe some of the committees and what the time requirements are and when they meet, because that can help.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mrs. Quick?
Yes.
On the list of subcommittees, we actually have, there's actually one that we, that's not listed, I actually found it in the handbook. It's actually called, "The committee will annually designate a person who may not be a member of the committee to serve as its legislative representative." Whoever wants to do that.
What is this?
Legislative representative. It's filed BJ under School Committee Legislative Program. I have a copy of it. I couldn't believe it when I saw it, I was like, oh.
But it says not a member of the committee?
Yeah, it doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be, but just a representative, a legislative representative for the committee.
Hmm.
Yeah. It's like, wow.
That sounds good. The other one that's not on here is the anti-bullying committee, that was never placed on here, which Robert's a member of right now. So we have, all right, thank you. So we'll add those two. Let me see. That sounds good. Any more questions on that? I think, so we'll put that on the agenda for the next time.
Just pass these out.
These just came from the Mass Association of School Committee members, and they're forms that you would need, apparently. There we go. Give those to you. Thank you. Correspondence, Mr. Hayes?
No correspondence tonight, Chairwoman Kane.
Can't make one up? Thank you. All right. The future meeting dates and agenda items, we, so we have town meeting this Saturday on May 11th. We have the superintendent evaluation, and Mrs. Bonnies, you'll get just to listen to us, you don't have to participate in that. Yes?
Just a note for the meeting on May 11th, I will not be here because as, I was studying this week, and I found out that my final exam was that night, so I'm not missing, I apologize, I'm not missing my final exam.
Oh, absolutely not.
You better get a day off tomorrow.
We wish you good luck on that exam, too. Good for you. Okay. And if you have any other items, Mrs. Bonnies, if you have items, you can call the superintendent or myself, and if you ever wanna put an item on the...
On the next meeting.
On the next meeting that you haven't thought of yet.
Okay.
So that'll be good. All right, I want, yes?
One more thing.
Mrs. Benton?
Because I'm looking at one of our outstanding administrative assistants, Cheryl Sodquist. Today is Administrative Assistant Day, and we celebrated it in Wilmington, and I just wanna take a moment in front of the camera to publicly thank all the administrative assistants in Wilmington, both town and school, but specifically the schools, because I wrote, as I wrote to the staff this morning, we couldn't do our jobs, but we're not fought. Their patience, their support, their flexibility, and always with a smile, willingness to answer anyone's question who comes before them, and put up with some silly situations and do it with unwavering support of us. So again, acknowledgement and thank you to all the administrative assistants in town.
Thank you. Okay, is that it? Mr. Veil?
I'm just gonna apologize in advance, I'm gonna miss town meeting, I think, this year, probably for the first time in thirteen years.
Oh, yeah.
I always go, I enjoy it, but I have to go to New York City, so actually heading down tomorrow, be back on Sunday.
Good, okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting us know, that's good. All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Stay a second. Dr. Quick, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. Thank you, good luck, everybody.